Talk about serious. All right, we're starting. And Susan, what do I need to do?
We need to take attendance.
All right, would you start and call our names and we'll respond accordingly.
Trustee Dineger.
Yes.
Trustee Chaconi.
Yes.
Trustee Taggart. Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Dolce.
Yes.
Trustee Ellis.
Yes.
Trustee Valentine.
Yes.
Trustee Worthington.
Yes.
Trustee Ajikame.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
And President Kesselman.
Yes.
All right. Susan, are we going right into the oath of office?
We are.
All right, before I even greet everyone, we are going to do something wonderful. And that is the oath of office for our newly-elected student trustee alternate, Mr. Dion Davis.
All right, we're thanking you. I, Dion Davis.
I, Dion Davis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
That's it.
There you go.
I'm honored to have this opportunity to represent my university that I love so much in this capacity. And I'm excited to see how everything goes for the year.
Musical chairs. And our current student trustee, Ike Ajikame, would like to say something.
Good afternoon, everyone. I just wanted to send my congratulations to Dion. I was fortunate to work with him, was it two years ago, under Maryam Sarnahan, when she was the Governor Affairs Committee Chair. And Dion is an exceptional leader. He's someone who I can definitely co-sign on that and say that is true about him. Again, I was fortunate to work with him. And one of the things that really resonated with Dion is the fact that he was very mature for his age. He reminded me a lot about myself, although I'm not too old. I'm only 23. But when I was his age, at 18, 19-years-old, which is not too long ago, of course, but I remember just having that passion, that drive, and that ambition to succeed. And I see that a lot in Dion. And I'm glad and happy to be working with him. I just want to congratulate you, and I'm looking forward to working with you again this year.
Thank you, Ike. We're all so nicely said. Now, I was saying, wow, yeah, I remember being 19 once. So, good afternoon, everybody, and nice to look out and see you all. It's September, it's hard to believe. I'm gonna make one quick comment at this point. When I came onto the campus this morning, and I was late for my first morning. I'm a little sidetracked today. In fact, you're gonna see me looking at my phone, which is very rude, but I've got tons of grapes coming in. Out in Northern California, it's been really hot. They are, it's like a tsunami of grapes. And they keep buzzing me to tell me about things that are going wrong. No one ever tells me about things that are going right. So occasionally, you'll see me looking down. But I want to say as I walk.
Tell them to bring the grapes. Oh gee. Tell them to bring the grapes here.
Yeah, for a while, we were looking for anybody who had swimming pools that they could empty and we could put grapes in, so they could ferment there. But I was running late this morning, so for some reason, I was more leisurely walking onto the campus because I knew I'd already pretty much missed the first meeting. And this campus looks better than I have ever seen it look. The landscaping, the plants, it's just extraordinary. So I want to give a shout-out, Don Hudson already knows this, I've already mentioned it once, but to all the people who are, who have designed, implemented, maintained, cared for all of the beautiful landscaping. It's just looking fantastic. We've all been talking about it. And now I will turn it over for President Kesselman's report.
My words will be brief because we have a packed agenda. But firstly, Linda Wharton, I thought I saw you. Are you here? Did I see Linda Wharton here or no? Yes, no? Well, let me shout her out anyway, even if she isn't there. For those who had the opportunity last night to listen to Julian Zelizer, I thought it was as good a talk on the Constitution and as it relates to the current situation as I've heard. I thought that the audience was terrific. It was a diverse audience, included both community members, it included faculty and staff, obviously, and a large number of students. I think it's critically important, as I said that day, and I'll say it again today. This is a year that we're going to have the Constitution, and it has been the last four or five years actually tested. I think it's critically important at this institution, critically important at this institution, that we promote civil dialogue and civil discourse throughout this year. These are trying times, but we're gonna be dealing with issues that I know through, A, conducting the appropriate research, and B, working together to come up with ways in which we can address tough issues in a way that we grow from it, rather than destroy ourselves from it. I know this institution, and I know this institution is capable to be a leader in this. So I encourage all of you, as we go through this academic year, which I think is going to be, and I said it earlier in the year, probably the greatest and most, among the most significant changes in the history of the university, with the academic quad coming onboard, and then, of course, the establishment of the campus and Atlantic City. So I want you all to, and now that we have the contract in place for everyone but CWA, and we haven't forgotten you guys, folks out there, we need to move forward, and we need to move forward and be a leader in conducting, as I said, civil discourse and civil dialogue on issues of importance. I also want to shout out, for those who do not know, that this year, as a result of the American Association of State Colleges and Universities, has identified one university, college and university of that group, which consists of about 400 or so comprehensive public universities, to be a leader innovation and excellence and civic learning and community engagement. And that institution is Stockton University. So kudos to all of you for making that happen. That concludes my remarks, but we do have some words.
Dr. Kesselman, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Dr. Ahn is not here yet, so if we could move.
And we also skipped something.
There you go.
I skipped something, and it was even highlighted here, which is.
There you go.
A resolution for the 2017-18 slate of officers. So Susan, what do I have to do for that?
Need to call a motion.
Oh, do I have a motion?
Yes.
So move.
So we have.
Second.
Any comments or questions? And all those in favor?
Well, we're gonna call roll.
Oh, yes, we'll call roll.
Trustee Dineger.
Yes.
Trustee Chaconi.
Yes.
Trustee Dolce.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Ellis.
Yes.
Trustee Valentine.
Yes.
Trustee Worthington.
Yes.
Trustee Ajikame.
Yes.
Thank you, thanks for pointing that out, Susan.
Susan, do you want me to skip over? And I would like to do the check presentation.
Yes, please.
Okay. Let me provide a little background. I really don't need this because I knew him extremely well, as many people here did. But I do want to give you some data for those who did not know, G. Larry James. There he is at the 68 Olympics. But Larry was nicknamed, for those who do not know, the Mighty Burner. And we actually had it for years, and probably still do, the Mighty Burner Camp in the summer. He was a longtime, longtime administrator at the university. He was initially our Director of Athletics and Recreation, and then morphed into the Dean of Athletics and Recreation. For those who do not know, he won a gold member, is a member of that 68 team in the 4x400-meter relay team. And in fact, to this day, they still have the world's record in that particular event. Now, I have to have a little asterisk, they don't run that event anymore, but they were still the fastest people in the world then. Okay? And he really was a burner. He also won the silver medal in the 400-meter event, I think it was a lone event, in that same Olympics in what was then, think, 1968, Mexico City. Times were not all that different than now in what was going on in the country. So it was an incredible moment in the history. Larry has a legacy bike ride, which was initiated back in 2009. And it was the mission of, to continue his legacy, because Larry helped students succeed. Larry, for those who do not know, was the, when we established the EOF program, the summer program, the eight-week program, as part of the morning routine in that program, folks would get up early and run around the lake. And Larry, of course, being the fastest person on the planet, would lead that around the lake. But actually, he would slow back and help those at the end to move forward, to show them that it doesn't matter, you know, where you start or end in a race, it's the fact that you're in the race. And he was a great inspiration to the students at Stockton. We've been running this. The net proceeds that have been donated to his legacy scholarship fund since 2009 is more than now $150,000. And this past June, the Ninth Annual Legacy Ride Race, just under, it's $23,389, but I'm gonna embellish it and round it to almost $24,000, so it was a great year. So can, who's coming up here to join us? Craig? Are you here, Craig Stanball? Let's do this. All right.
If we could just take a minute before we do the check presentation, just say a few words. In 2009, Arnaldo, my good cycling friend, walked into my office, and we both had a brainstorm at the same time and said, "We need to do something to continue Larry's legacy." And being avid cyclists, we hit upon G. Larry James Legacy Bike Ride. And I have to say that that was December of '08. In '09, as President Kesselman said, the bike ride was born. I will tell you that it was supported just tremendously from the outset by all of my supervisors. And I must say also, and some of them are still in this room, and from day one, my colleagues have been nothing but spectacular in supporting this. And those of you in the room know who you are. So as we present this check, it's Arnaldo and myself up here, but it is all of you that helped make this possible to this point. So, Arnoldo, if you want to say anything?
It's been an honor and a blessing, actually, to work with Craig. But really, it's a community activity, and everyone from outside the community and within the community has come together on this effort. But more so for the students and the possibility that they will be able to receive scholarships and complete their work. And that's the basic mission. Thank you.
Before we receive the check, this fellow here, Arnaldo, for those who do not know on the board, you want to talk about a quintessential faculty member. It is him. This is among the most dedicated faculty members, not only now, in the history of Stockton. So thank you, Arnaldo, for all that you've done, for all of us, every year, every year.
With that being said, we'll present the check.
I never even knew Larry James, I'm ashamed to say this, back when I was a student here in 1976, '77, I didn't even know he had been in the Olympics. That's how modest he was. And I used to jog with him because I was on the crew club. And somehow, we ended up jogging with one of his teams. And I was kind of lagging in the back, but we'd have these great conversations. No idea that he was an Olympian. What are we moving on to? Committee reports? We're holding off on the. So let's start with the Academic Affairs and Planning Committee Report, which met this morning. It's the meeting that I missed, I'm so sorry. Trustee Dolce is the chair.
We had a pretty active committee meeting this morning. Before we get into the details, we have a resolution, and we have some information. I'm gonna ask Provost Vermillion to come up. But before, I'd like to just congratulate Doug and the Institute for Faculty Development and Organizing. October 18 and 19 is a day of teaching, dynamic lecturing. And the purpose to celebrate teaching at Stockton, visit colleagues as they teach their classes, learn new strategies, and hear guest speaker Christine Harrington share ways to make lectures more dynamic. It's a great tribute to you all for putting it together and for the Institute for organizing it. So hopefully, it'll be well-attended. So thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Dineger, members of the board, President Kesselman, colleagues in the audience. We had a very informative meeting this morning. On behalf of the Academic Affairs and Planning Committee, I have one resolution today for the board to act upon. The board members in attendance unanimously approve the resolution. I will conclude with then two informational items. Resolution concerns a new grant, Building Teacher Leadership Capacity Grant. It's actually year three of three. The resolution authorizes Stockton to accept the Building Teacher Leadership Capacity Grant and to certify the accuracy of the contract commitments for $113,491. The funds awarded are for the third and final year of the grant. Chairwoman Dineger, I submit this resolution for board action.
Can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? And roll call.
Trustee Dineger.
Yes.
Trustee Chaconi.
Here, yes.
Trustee Davis. Trustee Dolce.
Yes.
Trustee Ellis.
Yes.
Trustee Valentine.
Yes.
Trustee Worthington.
Yes.
Trustee Ajikame.
Yes.
I have two informational items. We had our Fall Faculty Conference, welcomed our faculty back to Stockton for the fall semester, and talked about welcoming the largest and most diverse class in Stockton's history. That was very exciting. We also discussed Atlantic City, the developments of new academic programs, our coach survey, and our campus climate survey. And so we really started off with a very exciting beginning of the semester. The second information item is the 2016-17 Scholarly Activity Report. This report recognized and celebrates the exceptional scholarly and creative work completed by Stockton University students, faculty, and staff. It also exemplifies the breadth and depth of scholarship undertaken by the Stockton community. So please take a good look at that. And thank you.
I just want to shout out, now I know she's here, I saw her, Patty Weeks, please stand up for your incredible record of securing.
Another year.
Grant funds for the better part of 30 years. Patty, it just never ends. Thank you so, so much.
Yes, now we're gonna go back to a leadership award.
We started early, that was the problem.
Yes.
Okay. First, we would like to ask interim dean of Health Sciences, Lisa Calamitas, to bring Dr. Alvin Ahn, who is, you know, a doctor at the Rothman Institute. He also has been an incredible friend of the university, an incredible friend of the region. So, Dr. Calamitas.
Good afternoon, everyone. Is this on? Each year, the School of Health Sciences Leadership Award is presented to an individual who's made important and enduring contributions to healthcare that impact Stockton University and the surrounding community. Excuse me. I'm honored to present this year's award to Dr. Alvin Ahn. Dr. Ahn is the Director of Orthopedic Surgery at Atlantic Care Regional Medical Center, a Certified Joint Specialist at Rothman Institute, and an Associate Professor of Orthopedic Surgery at Thomas Jefferson University Hospital in Philadelphia. Dr. Ahn has taught and mentored nursing students, medical students, orthopedic residents, and orthopedic fellows for over 17 years. His goal is to teach students to be independent thinkers and to instill within his students the need for practitioners to utilize sound reasoning in clinical and decision-making. Dr. Ahn has shared his expertise with numerous programs within Stockton School of Health Sciences for many years. Through didactic lectures and surgical mentorship, Dr. Ahn has educated our nursing, occupational therapy, exercise science, and physical therapy students in treatment of complex pelvic injury and acetibular fractures, among other topics. In addition, Dr. Ahn is part of the didactic curriculum for Atlantic Care Regional Medical Center Orthopedic Trauma and regularly lectures ARMC and Jefferson Orthopedic Residence in various topics in trauma management. He's also part of the Physician Assistant and Nurse Practitioner Programs at Jefferson University. Dr. Ahn's mission in training healthcare providers extends to the postgraduate level, and he is actively involved in the education of practicing orthopedic surgeons who are interested in advanced surgical technique and joint arthroplasty. Dr. Ahn is a graduate of the University of Pennsylvania and SUNY Stony Brook School of Medicine. He's a member of the Pennsylvania Orthopedic Society, the Association of Hip and Knee Surgeons, the American Academy of Orthopedic Surgeons, and the New Jersey Orthopedic Society. In addition, Dr. Ahn serves in leadership roles in numerous professional and scientific societies, such as Atlantic Care Trauma Education Group and the ARMC Physician Leadership Group. Dr. Ahn has published over 60 peer-reviewed journal articles, as well as a dozen professional book chapters. Dr. Ahn has been listed as top doc in both Philadelphia Magazine and/or Inside New Jersey Magazine 14 times since 2010. It goes without saying that we are all very, very fortunate to know and to work with Dr. Ahn. On behalf of the students, the faculty, and staff of the School of Health Sciences and Stockton University, I would like to thank Dr. Ahn from the bottom of my heart for all of his significant efforts and contributions, which have served to advance healthcare and healthcare education in our region.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm extremely honored by this award. And, you know, all my life, we strive to improve healthcare for our patients in the region and in our Philadelphia, New Jersey area. But what we've been doing over the last 17 years is one doctor cannot take care of all the patients. And so what we do is, I think, the way we extend our hand is by education. And by educating our students, our college students, our medical students, our fellows and residents, I think we are, our reach is much greater. And I congratulate all of us who are educators here, who try to increase our reach and to extend help through our community and, of course, our entire country. I think that's the way to do it. You know, one person can't do too much, okay? We can't do enough. But if we extend our reach through education, I think we can expand our, you know, our influence. So thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Of course.
Not too impressive, huh?
Right. And probably more than half the people in here listening to that lovely, lovely introduction, I was like, gee, hmm, my hip's hurting a little. And then there's the bum knee. All right, we're going to move on to the Student Affairs Committee Report, which is, Trustee Worthington is the chair.
I'm the new chair. Ellen Bailey, my colleague on the board, left to take a position on the other side of the table. Want to wish her luck, I saw her today. And Student Affairs is really athletics, recreation, students, and enrollment. And they're, I guess, Stockton's in a really good position right now. I think we're really bucking the trend. I think it comes from a strategic vision that was really implemented a couple of years ago with the administration. Got really implemented through Peter Barata and Bob Heinrich, and people like that who want to see the institution grow. And like many institutions in New Jersey, in public and private institutions, they're losing enrollment. And I think it's really shocking what's going on here at Stockton in positive way. And I'd like to bring up John Jacaveli to give us a report on what's happening with our enrollment, both graduate and undergraduate studies.
Thank you, Trustee Worthington, Chairperson Dineger, President Kesselman, members of the board, friends and colleagues of the Stockton community. I want to begin my remarks the same way I started my remarks two months ago, when they graciously invited me to do a report in front of what is the annual trustees retreat. And what I said to them at that time was, for any of you who have an emotional attachment to Stockton University, if my presentation doesn't put a prideful smile on your face, I've really failed as a presenter. So having said that, I want to get right into it. Now, many of you who have been here in the years past know that I have three charges. One, I'm going to go through the summer enrollment numbers. Number two, we'll then get into what Trustee Worthington is alluding to, our undergraduate numbers, and then follow it up with graduate. So let's get right to it here. And here we go. Starting with summer numbers. Couple of things on the summer. What you see in this graph is that we have held our own from last year to this year as far as undergraduate numbers for the summer school is concerned. We had had a fairly significant dip from 2015 to 2016, but that has been steadied. What you also see are two years in a row of very significant growth on the graduate side. 8% and 6%. So much so, that when you look at the bottom line, we are showing that we're in the black. We had a slight increase of 1%. These numbers were given to me by Robert Gregg, and I'm sure that I don't see Dr. Gregg in the audience. Is he here?
Amsterdam, real close.
He's in Amsterdam, there you go. But I know I can speak for him on this. Yes, we look forward to the summer of 2018. I think we'll do great things in '18. But I think all of us who are close to these numbers can't wait for the summer of 2019. Because what happens with the summer of 2019, we will have our Atlantic City Gateway Project all done. And we will be having students very active in the summer at that new, beautiful campus. I cannot believe that that will not have a profound effect on the numbers that I'm showing you here. Okay, let's quickly go to the undergraduate side. I want to hit you with some hard facts first. First up, this year, there were 4,639 prospective freshmen who received an acceptance letter. That's an increase of 27% from last year. Here comes the big number. At Census Day, we had 1,569 freshmen register for classes. That's a 32% increase. We're gonna come back to that one in a little bit. And for our transfer students, we had 988 new transfers. That's a 2% increase. Ladies and gentlemen, you've heard me talk about this before. With the dramatic shrinking of the transfer cohort, for us to have that 2%, my enrollment management team is very, very proud of that. And before I have a couple more comments on the 1,569, if you would indulge me, since we're doing a lot of shout-outs, I want to do a little shout-out myself. And if my two offices will tolerate their dean and humor him, would the Office of Financial Aid and the Office of Admissions, please stand up. Yeah? Indulge me for a second. Couple, and there must be a dozen of these, but I'm just picking out a few. When you have the type of accomplishments that we've achieved as a group here at Stockton University, there are a lot of little success stories amongst that. Let me just pick out a few for you. One of the numbers, and President Kesselman does a great job with this, showing the extreme increases that we've had from last year to this year in our diversity numbers. When you look at our numbers of black students, Hispanic students, Asian students, we've had a very, very successful year. Along those same lines, and we have, and I'll tell you this upfront, we have one of the best EOF programs in the state. But truth be told, we do. It's a top one. But truth be told, for the last six years, those students come from one, Heather Medina. For the last six years, she's in charge of that. Many of you heard the. Many of you heard the saying that was going around this past summer, eighty-five for eighty-five. President Kesselman remembers it, eighty-five for eighty-five. What that meant is Heather recruited eighty-five students, they're all here, they all went through the six-week program. And when you talk to the faculty members who are closest to the students during that summer program, they'll tell you, this is one of the most academically talented groups, if not the most academically talented group, that we've ever had. So again, one example, Heather, thank you. On the financial aid side, had a busy year in financial aid, didn't we, Jean? About, I guess you would say it was the spring of last year, she got word that the feds were going to change the way we do financial aid. A new term was coming up, PPY, which stands for Prior Prior Year or Early FAFSA's. She immediately started a program. All right, we had a little working group. Our goal was to make sure that just as we have our rolling admissions, we were going to have rolling financial aid packages as well. And so we put a little group together, did that, and quite frankly, our packages were out at least a month to two and a half months before everyone else's. We got tremendous feedback on that. Really, it worked well for us. It doesn't stop there. Jean and another group started a new program for us that was approved by the president, the Achieve Program. It's a great new tool that Heather will use when she's out recruiting our EOF students. But as we were doing that, and as we're recognizing those who are involved officially in enrollment management, there's someone who unofficially I want to do a shout-out for as well, who when I tell you all these work groups that I've just mentioned, he's been involved, and that's our Bursar, Tom Roth. Tom, take us in. Trustee Worthington addressed something that I want to just quickly address and we'll move on. The achievement that we accomplished with fifteen-hundred-and-sixty-nine in this freshman class has to be put in the proper context. We just saw an article this past week in a very popular publication called Inside Higher Education. In the publication, the survey looked at well over seven-hundred, they were all, I think, enrollment officials, at seven-hundred schools throughout the country. What they came up with is that only one in three had met their enrollment goals for 2017, one out of three. Here we are at thirty-two percent. And let's put that number in context. At this time last year, I'm working very closely with Harvey Kesselman and Peter Barata, and we're sitting down to put down our goals. And we took a very aggressive number. All of you remember that last year, we had eleven-hundred-and-ninety in the freshman class. It was the largest class in the history of the school. And we were going to, as they say, buck the trends, and we were looking for thirteen-hundred. Well, we kind of upshot that by about two-seventy, didn't we? All right? Not in this environment. This is an exceptional, exceptional achievement. Yes, my staff was involved with it, but every one of my staff will agree, it doesn't happen unless the whole community is involved with it. So if you are going to do a round of applause, please do it for yourself right now. Thank you. Let's move on. There are other factors that helped us with this because, as we know, we're in an environment where students have options. And so we wanted to address something, and this is where Harvey came through big time for us. Around December, we saw that this was going to be an exceptionally strong year. We had no idea we were going to have fifteen-hundred-plus, but we knew we were probably going to hit our thirteen-hundred. But I went to him very worried. Said, Harvey, because we're doing rolling packages now, like we're doing rolling admissions, I'm running out of money. I'm looking at my budget, and I'm worried about this thing called Stockton Grant Aid or SGIA. He looked at me, said, if you think this is going to help you get these students in, just go, relax, just do your job. Well, we did it. He told me to go, I went. And what we wound up with is doubling the number, actually more than doubling the number. At this time last year, we had two-hundred-and-twenty students who had an SGIA in their package. This year, in this class, there are five-hundred-and-forty of them. And by the way, the yield on that group is thirty-seven percent. Our normal general yield, which is very healthy, is around thirty-four percent. That sounds a lot to someone who's not in enrollment management, but I want you to think of yield the same way you would a retention number. If you heard that we were up two or three points in our retention, that's a big deal. Being two or three points up, that's a big deal, and it shows us that the SGIA really helped us in garnering the numbers that we had. Not the whole reason, but a significant one. Performance indicators. Logic would say to you, well, if Yaccavelli brought in and his staff brought in an extra four-hundred-plus students, that possibly our performance indicators may have taken a hit. Not the case here. As you can see, we have our regular admits, our EOF, and all. Now, one caveat for you here, when you look at the regular admit number, that is based on the new centering or new scoring that the College Board uses for the SATs. And when you look at that centering and scoring, there's approximately a thirty-to-thirty-five point difference between old SAT scores and new. But if you remember, last year's regular admit number was right around eleven-oh-eight, I think it was eleven-eight, eleven-ten, in that area. So as you can see, we're pretty much on board here. And going back to the EOF side of it, what you don't see here is that for the last six years, that number for the academic performance has been creeping ever so steadily towards the regular admit number. We're very proud of that, and again, hats off to all the efforts that Heather has put in to that initiative. All right, real quick, I wanted to show you some things on a survey that we did for our freshmen, we call influencers. And the first question on there, we asked the students, as you began your freshman, or your, excuse me, your college selection process, did you have Stockton as your clear choice, clear number-one choice? I was pleasantly surprised to see that over half said yes. Why am I pleasantly surprised? I know I'm mixing apples and oranges here, but stay with me. The last time we did a similar survey to this was back in 2014. And yes, it's different, but in 2014, when you received FAFSA data on a student, it also told you who the student applied to, and in the order that they applied, what was their first choice, their second choice, their third choice. And being involved in financial aid all these years, we know that the tendency for students, in the first choice, they're putting in their minds what they think is their first-choice school. And when we looked at the data from 2014, it was more like twenty-five to thirty percent of the students that had us in the first spot. I know, I'm mixing, I'm mixing, I realize it, but for us to have over fifty percent there shows you amongst our, especially within our region, the value of a Stockton education as each year goes by is more and more being recognized, and I just wanted to point that one out to you. Now, as I said, my survey's called Influencers. Here are your top four influencers. With the help of Jen Radwansky, I think she's around here someplace, I was teasing with her the other day, I said she wanted to kill me as I was doing this last minute, and she was such a big help to me because we knew that Jen could get these distributed while the students were going through orientation. So we had fifteen-hundred-plus students go through orientation. I got a great sample size on this, we had close to twelve-hundred of those back. So again, thank you, Jen. But it shows you the top influencers. Once again, you see financial aid and scholarship there, but you also see something that we always knew, but Peter Barata and his staff in IR have done studies on this, so now we don't just have an inkling of it, we have facts behind it, that one of the key things is getting the student on this campus. Look at Open House, look at Campus Tour, they are so important in the decision-making process for these students who are considering us. And I wanted to show that to you because I think it's important. Okay, very quickly. This is a traditional one I always want to show you. It shows you the freshmen for historical data for the last six years, shows you the transfer data. I want to remind you of something. Every one of those that you see, other than 2015, I was able to come up in front of you and announce that this is the largest class, the largest freshman class in the history of the school. Everyone remembers that, I have some people smiling out there, yep, yeah, you were, you were doing that. But yet, as Harvey has shown us in the past, only in 2014 did we meet our goal of a two percent increase in head count. Well, how could that be? Well, it could be for a couple of reasons. We have students coming in, and then we have students going out. And there's a good way of going out, and there's a bad way of going out. What's the good way? They graduate. Institutional research data, and Craig Stanbach, who helped me with doing my research, has shown me that if you go back to 2012 and compare it to 2017, there's approximately three-hundred more students who graduated in 2017 than in 2012. We have to replace those students. We also have to replace those students who stop out. And I am so pleased to be able to announce to you that we are going to be doing some extensive work at this school on that. We have taken SEP and gone to another level. For those of you who don't understand that acronym, SEP, it's Strategic Enrollment Management Planning. And with the SEP Council that is in place, I am assured that over the next year or two, you are going to see some really strong initiatives that'll help us in holding those students, retaining them there so that they go out the right way, graduation, not stopping out. And so we're very excited about that. But I wanted to point that out to you on that slide. Okay, total head count, and this kind of reiterates what we were just talking about. We've just had a very dramatic increase. You can do the math probably better than I can, seventy-eight, fifty-four, now we're at eighty-two, seventy-five, four-hundred and some odd more students, whatever that comes out to be. But yet, that only has a five percent increase in the total head count. Well, I just told you there was thirty-two percent increase in freshmen and two percent increase in transfers. It shows you what I was just talking about, how we have to replace those students who have graduated or stopped out. And so this is what we're looking at. Okay, let me continue on. Graduate studies. For anybody who knows Dr. Amy Beth Glass, you know that she's a very competitive person. There was no way that she was going to allow me to get up here and give you all this good news on the undergraduate level without more than holding her own. So, here we are with graduate numbers. And as you can see at the end, there is a twenty percent increase on the grad side. In speaking with Amy Beth, she told me that there are a couple of factors affecting this. Number one, two new programs, the Master of Science in Data Science and Strategic Analytics, and an alternative route to obtain your teaching degree. That was number one. Number two, she specifically told me, I better do a shout-out, to the School of Education and to the Holocaust and Genocide Program. Why? Because over the last two years especially, those two programs have really put the effort in and put in a number of online program offerings. Those program offerings give that accessibility for those students, and hence, you see a twenty percent increase in graduate numbers. Okay, coming around the bend here. Total head count. You can see we're having a nice, healthy increase in that head count from sixteen to seventeen. Many of you know that a few months ago, a very ambitious goal was put out there by our president. We want to be at ten-thousand head count by 2021. That seemed like a pretty heavy lift about six, eight months ago. I don't think it looks so heavy right now. I think we've made really great strides to get ourselves in the position where over the next three to four years, we can attain that since we're at ninety-two, sixteen right now. So again, that's my report, I hope I did what I was supposed to do. I hope that every one of you have a prideful smile on your face. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Ahng.
Madam Chair, I just have just one comment to the presentation. Wonderful presentation, I love to hear about the increase in EOF students, but I wouldn't wear my banner as an EOF student and graduate of the class of eighty-six if I didn't take somewhat of an exception of your definition of the most talented.
There you go, that's what I would hear.
Just saying.
I take that.
A couple pieces of data to support what John said. I'm pleased to report, you know, preliminarily, but we know it will be that, Zhongping reported to me just a couple of days ago that our four-year graduation rate, still, can I still say it? Can I still say it? All right, hit sixty percent. Sixty, how much?
One, sixty-one.
Sixty-one percent for, that is incredible, and that adds to the four-year. Less than ten years ago, it was forty-one percent for, so for our twenty-some percent graduation rate is extraordinary, and that's to work on retention, and our retention rates remain a very high eighty-eight, eighty-six, seven, whatever, somewhere in that third semester. The more important thing is the four-year rate. And the six-year rate is seventy-three percent, so seventy-three percent. And the SGIA, I want to point this out, this is very important. We spent less students per, less dollars per students to recruit that class than we have in the past. So it was a combination of merit and aid-based dollars that maximized that yield. So I want you to understand, although it was more dollars, it really was less dollars per student, which means that the actual revenue yield would be much better for the institution. And I know how much, you know, people were blown away by the size this year, and we're very good positioned, but rest assured, we needed to grow to be where we needed to be to get back to that target of ten-thousand, and we are there now. We added faculty lines, and Laurie can attest to that. We are committed to ensuring that there's revenue and resources for whatever support services that may be necessary to ensure that those graduation rates and retention rates remain so high. So, John, thank you for a great report, but I did want to add those pieces of data.
Harvey, may I? I don't, wouldn't want to underestimate how important, when I asked, I kind of thought that all the excitement about Atlantic City was driving all this. Not at all, hasn't even shown up, it's not even on the radar. So I think that one of the more important things is the fact that there's a strategic plan. And that has to do with our information technology and our planning folks in, you know, in the administration. We also hired somebody in recruiting that was out there, and I think we were smarter with how we targeted our money. So next year, with Atlantic City coming online, I think that, you know, we're looking good for the future because I think we will be the beneficiary of the excitement next year, which we didn't see this year. But anyway, congratulations to all of those because that's really our receivables, because people here do important things. And without the people who are here to bring in these new bodies, we wouldn't have jobs, we wouldn't be educating, we wouldn't be, you know, functioning in the passionate fields that we're in without people bringing these students in a very difficult time into, you know, into our doors. So, anyway, congratulations to everybody in the, who participated in making the enrollment very successful.
And on to Finance and Professional Services Committee Report, Trustee Ellis.
Thank you very much. The Finance and Professional Services Committee met this morning and like to thank everyone for their hard work today. We had a very good agenda, pretty straightforward agenda, so everything I will review today is part of a consent agenda that I'll ask the board to approve after my brief report. There were several bid waivers for consideration, some for this fiscal year eighteen, all the way up to, in a couple of cases, fiscal year twenty-two. The first is for Spesio Architectural Group. This bid waiver is for services related to the campway, campus walkway improvement project from, which would be from the parking lot one to the F-Wing Plaza. This is phase two of this project. Spesio was involved in phase one, and so after a public bid process, we did decide, the decision was made to recommend them because of the continuity they provide to the campus walkway project. The second bid waiver is for Altice Media Solutions. This is for TV commercials and digital advertising, which we use for recruitment, targeting specific age and demographic groups. This bid waiver is for two years. Our collective budget for advertising, and you can see the results in John Yaccavelli's report you just heard, our budget has grown up this past year to support those efforts, and so this is another project, another company that we are recommending that be considered to provide help, especially with the Atlantic City campus and recruiting transferred students. The next bid waiver is for Cersei Corporation. They provide the university library, the university's libraries' symphony software. This is for a two-year bid waiver. They've been our sole source provider for many years for this, for the symphony, for the library symphony program. By going with a two-year waiver, we realize about a five-thousand dollars per year savings for the two-year period. The next bid waiver is for SAS, SAS Institute. This is for a five-year bid waiver for analytical and business data management software used for instruction and research. Because it is a five-year contract, we've been using this company for several years, but because it is a five-year contract, it does rise above the threshold and so qualifies for a bid waiver. Also, InterFolio, the last bid waiver for you to, under this resolution, is for Prom- qualifies for a bid waiver. Also, Interfolio, the last bid waiver for you to, under this resolution, is promotion and tenure solution for the AFT professional staff, faculty, as well as management. Currently, we have a platform that is part paper, part online, a very cumbersome and time-consuming process. This would put everything online, and it has been heartily endorsed by the union as well as faculty and as well as management. There were some increases in bid waiver contracts as well for consideration. The first is for Genova Burns. This is for an increase of 40,000. This is to provide additional legal services in relation to TOT09 compliance. Also, Baker Tilly, Vinciau Kraus. This is for work that has already been completed with respect to an audit, administration, and finance, additional interviews that were required. The next resolution for consideration is the capital budget for fiscal '19. This is an annual report that we are required to provide to the state. It's, it asks if we had all of our capital needs fully funded, what would we want, and how much would we project that cost to be? I will tell you that this has never actually been brought to fruition, but it is nice to dream. If we got every project that we wanted fully funded by the state, we would be talking about almost $257 million in funding. We're not going to get it. However, I will say that the report does provide value in the sense that it will make very clear to the camp, to the community and the public at large, the priorities that this university sees in terms of capital spending. And it also reinforces our master plan in the sense that is very consistent with the plan that we put, I guess was approved in 2010 initially. So, it does have value, even though unfortunately, we don't anticipate too much in the way of funding. In addition, there were bid waivers that were pre-approved by the executive committee, so I'll be asking the board to ratify those decisions. The first is for Whit Kiefer. This is for work, additional bid waiver increase related to the search for the Dean of Health Sciences. You may have heard that Whit Kiefer name in the past. We've used him several times in search, most recently for our wonderful athletic director. And so, they've done great work for us. So, we decided to recommend they be used again for this project. Also, increase for Ruffalo Noel Levitz. This is for work related to data management, predictive modeling, and communications, targeted to current high school students. Again, you heard the wonderful report on our great increase in admissions for this year, and student population for this year. This group helps us with that. Part of the increase in cost, a lot of the increase in cost for this bid waiver is related to the fact that we are looking to beef up our list of potential students coming to Stockton by 50,000. There's a cost associated with this, which is born in the, a lot of it born in the increase. Finally, there's a bid waiver that the executive committee passed for Hobson's. Again, this is to support enrollment management. Part of this is for proprietary software called Naviance, which is used by almost every high school in the state of New Jersey, and is a primary place that students and families go to when they first start thinking, start their college search. So, it's a place where we really need to be, especially given our recruitment area. And finally, the last bid waiver that the executive committee pre-approved, and again, I'll ask ratification today, is again for Spesio Architectural Group. This, however, is for professional services related to the fit-out of our third-floor Health Sciences Center for their physical therapy program. They would also provide construction administration during the bid process for the construction phase of that project. That completes all of the work that we did this morning. Again, under consent agenda, I would recommend the board ratify all of these resolutions.
Thank you so much. Trustee Ellis, the sweep of those explanations, I appreciate so much. Really, that's, he nailed it all. So, do I have a motion?
Some.
And a second?
Yes.
Any discussion or conversation, questions?
Trustee Dienger.
Yes.
Trustee Chaconi.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Dolce.
Yes.
Trustee Ellis.
Yes.
Trustee Valentine.
Yes.
Trustee Worthington.
Yes.
Trustee Agicame.
Yes.
Were there any information items that needed to be covered? You covered it within there.
There was contracts that were awarded. And I would like to point out the great work done there because as time has gone on, in my work on the finance committee and even before, the number of bid waivers keeps coming down, the number of contracts that are bid out, under competitive bid are growing, are going up. So, I congratulate everyone for their work on that administration and finance.
Great. Thank you. Now, the audit committee report, Trustee Chaconi.
Time for everybody to wake up. So, we had a great meeting last month of the audit committee. As you probably know, we have two types of audits that go on. One audit is the audit of the financial statements of the college. It's required by the state and by the federal government. It's a opinion on the financial statements given as a whole that commenced probably about three weeks ago. They're really heavy duty in the middle of it. It'll be completed by the end of the month, and everything is going very well. Our outside auditors are the international accounting firm of Grant Thornton. Simultaneous to that, we have a internal audit group going on, and we use the firm Baker Tilly for our internal audit. They have a lot of experience with universities and colleges, and they oversee our internal audit process. This past year, we completed the audit of the Athletic Department, Human Resources, SASE. They're currently wrapping up the risk management part of the college. And then, for the rest of the year, we're going to do enrollment management, ADA compliance, emergency crisis management, and business planning. These internal audits are very helpful to management and trying to strengthen the overall operation. Their critical evaluation is very, very helpful. And that concludes my remarks on audit.
Thank you so much. And I'm going to turn to you again because we have a Buildings and Grounds Committee report. Trustee Schofer's not here today, so Trustee Chaconi's going to take over.
Thank you. And let me report just briefly that Trustee Schofer, as many of you know, has been recuperating from a somewhat serious illness. But I'm very happy to report, as of yesterday, he's doing much, much better. And we expect to see him at the next meeting. And we really are excited to have Leo back next time. So, that's good. We had a great Building and Grounds Committee. Building and Grounds Committee is by far the most exciting committee within us, and that's primarily because of the videos we get to see. So, with that, I'm going to bring up Don Hudson.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I'm actually delighted that I'm able to show my presentation or a version of it that we do in the morning. I'm much better with pictures. The meeting we had today, we went through an hour-long presentation. We went through all the projects. And this is just going to hit a couple of the top, the main topics. A couple of shots of Atlantic City progress, for those who haven't seen it. This is taken from, with our own drone that we use for actual construction purposes, as well as this kind of a marketing tool. We share the videos with our office of URM. Another shot. And we just kind of put that little placeholder in the top left-hand corner. That's what it's going to look like when it's done. Okay. And as I spoke about last, last year, actually, last spring, that steel would rise and be done somewhere around September. We nailed that schedule. As far as schedule goes, the construction is, has hit all of its milestones. We are on target to have a completion next summer. They're supposed to turn the keys over to us on August 1st. But during that period of Ju, July, we'll be moving furniture in and starting logistics. So, this is coming. What you're going to see over the next six months or so is really just the continuation, the exterior framing, the wall conditions, the exterior of the buildings is a kind of terracotta tile. If you've seen, like, the virtual hospital on Route 73, they have a version of it up in Voorhees. And this is another view looking down, down the coast. Budget-wise, we have nailed all of our budget milestones. We hold a sizable contingency, but have already have a list of items that we're going to be approaching. We're increasing our IT budgets because Bob gets all the money. We are increasing, we have money in there for our kitchen components. We also have some energy management systems. There's some other things that just are going to build and, and actually make the project even better. So, we are right on target for where we want to be. Okay, I'm going to move quickly to the Seaview project. This is a project we did, we started last, we started contemplating it last winter. It was a full exterior renovation. And this project was originally supposed to take all the way through spring, summer, and be completed in December. But, you know, I understand that we needed students in the building. So, Skip's group worked with Mr. Radwansky. We accelerated the pace, and all the construction of the exterior was completed by August 31st, so students could move in. The project represented ripping down all of the exteriors, replacing 400 window openings, which is almost 1,000 windows throughout the whole building, and tightening up all of the kind of the nooks and crannies, you could say. But, you know, caulking and what we call is just moisture control. And this is kind of a finished product. You really need to go out there and look at it for real, and you see the difference of what it, it really, it really pops. And as you know, we were under construction on Galloway all summer long. And I'm just going to hit you with the, kind of the top six projects and where we went with it. This is just an aerial shot of the Quad project. We are right on the schedule that we've been working on. We expect to be done construction by Thanksgiving, and we are targeting for furniture move-ins in December, and working with academics and so forth, kind of a logistics plan of easing into the building, occupying maybe a classroom or two during the semester, offices, you know, series of soft openings. But it is on target. The landscaping, you think this campus is nice, wait till you see this. This whole area, which is the Quad, is a series of landscaping, grass, sidewalks, lighting. It's really going to pop, and it's going to tie the campus center right back to this, this portion of the construction. Budgets are clear, and we're right on. We actually have less than 1% in change orders, which is amazing. And that's, again, thanks to Skip West and his division and the construction, the contractors. And then, the last component of this building, you heard, we have an architect onboard to do the third floor of the Health Science Center. We expect designs to be completed this fall, out the bid in the winter, start construction in late spring, and be open and operational for the fall of 2018. Physical therapy. For those who don't know, this building exists on campus. This is what it looked like in 1992. I'm going to give you all lesson in postmodern architecture. And I see nobody's jumping at it. Okay. So, the building didn't hold well in the weather. You saw it leaking. It looked, it looked leaking. It was what's called effervescence. Thank you, team. I won't tell you the science behind it. You'll be bored. But all the headers, the sills, the building was leaking, and it was just deteriorated. This is the building now. We ripped the part of, of SIF grants from the state, removed all of the headers and sills, replaced it, retightened the windows, power-washed the building. And although you'll see some of the, kind of the brick replacement, give us about a year, let the weather hit it, and it'll start to fade in. That was a major part of the project, but it was a two-part project. The other part was a mechanical infrastructure. This project had to start the day classes ended and be ready and operational when the classes began. Thanks to the faculty for their patience as we moved you into a building that was a little bit still dirty as we cleaned. But you guys were really patient with us. Thank you so much. But the mechanical system has been completely redone. It's a high-energy efficient system. We removed it from the geothermal, and we're adding capacity into, back to the geothermal, which will ultimately be used to improve this, the Science Center One mechanical systems. So, thanks a lot. This is another view of it. And very proud of that building. And again, postmodern architecture class in my building tomorrow. And the other great object that was waiting for construction to finish is our plan. This is not real. This is a rendering. Starting next week, you're going to see the construction of club organization flag installation. The bases will start sometime the end of next week. We're going to be adding 12 flags. There's some procedures now in motion to the how, what we're going to be flying out there. But in the meantime, it's coming, and we'll be ready for this fall. For those who need, who reside in A, C, and ABC and D wing, as you know, the A and D wings were, bathroom restrooms were renovated this summer, and they were done and operational almost on opening day, the day after opening day. So, thanks for walking down the hall to go somewhere else. But this is what it looks like now. All right. So, this is the golden moment. Thank you. Parking lot six, it was a mess. It had a huge recreational area right smack in the building and prime real estate. It has kids walking across the street to go to class, all over the place. And I use it like ants cross a picnic blanket, just all over the place, out of control. The driveway was really thin. Cars were salivating down the road. Mayhem. You know, believe me, I avoided that area all the time. Now, Skip West and I visit here every day because of the installation of a new recreation facility, which I am very happy to share with you. That's Skip, if anybody wants to. He doesn't know you. Then a quick shout out because I got a couple of guys that work in our division besides Skip. The facility team, what did they do this summer? Besides all the construction going on, here, microphone. This is a couple of quick highlights. You mentioned the grounds. Thank you very much. 500 new plants, native, native plants, and special pine needle mulch. Why is that cool? A lot of you probably asked, what is that all about? Well, John Fritsch is part of the biodiversity committee. It's an initiative that was designed and implemented through the 2020 program. Jamie Cromarty was a big part. He actually was the person who led that through before his retirement. John happily took over his chair. And when you put normal mulch down, it actually goes against the science of this. Am I right, John?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. The chemistry that goes into the soils. This pine mill mulch, which is imported from North Carolina, is actually a more sustainable model. It lasts longer. It lays longer. You'll like it, believe me. The other thing that is also great, and I just underlined a couple of them, the dark path. It shouldn't be called that anymore because this summer, we put in 42 night, light, light poles and new light systems, approved by the biodiversity, special nighttime glowing lights. The dark path is just slightly dark. So, it's much safer and perfect for the kids. So, I end my presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You know, we, we heard about, so many great things are going on at Stockton here today. But think about all the things that Don Hudson and his group are working on simultaneously, under budget, on time. Okay? You may need a course in botany that Laurie can fill you in on, but it's, it's good anyway. Let's have a big round of applause.
Nicely said. Nicely said. Nicely said. Development Committee report, trustee Jacobson is not here today, so I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Elmore, please.
Thank you very much, Chair Dyninger, President Kesselman, board, members of the community. At this point in the day, you may be pleased to know that I have no slides, or PowerPoint, or handouts. But I do have some information regarding the foundation and the development alumni activity that I think will be of note. The foundation has its annual meeting a week from tomorrow, on the 28th. During that meeting, we will be voting in a new slate of officers that includes Dr. Joanna Johnson as chair, Donna Busby as first vice-chair, alum Michael Albrecht as second vice-chair, alum Claire Kuhar as treasurer, and Michael Epps as secretary. And alum Rick Dovi has the treasured title of immediate past-chair. So, we'll be, we'll be voting them in and pleased to welcome them to their new, to their new roles. Foundation net assets as of June 30 of 2017, and for the auditors in the room, still under audit review, so not yet fully finalized. Were $35.88 million compared to $29.97 million the year before, so some very nice growth on the net assets of the foundation. Fiscal year giving through the end of August is almost $300,000. That's consistent with last year when you factor out the significant noise museum gifts and well ahead of fiscal '16 through that same period. And speaking of the noise museum, the Noise Foundation Board, which has, an independent organization that has supported the Noise Museum for many, many, many years, met a couple of weeks ago, passed a resolution to gift all of its assets to the Stockton Foundation to benefit the Noise Museum at Stockton. So we are in the process of moving that through. Their assets include about $1.6 million in cash and securities, as well as the Lily Lake Road property. So total somewhere in the $2 million range that in the next couple of months, we will be processing and completing, bringing all of that to the Stockton Foundation. So that will certainly help our year, we're pleased for that, but more importantly, we're pleased for the support for the, for the mission of the Noise Museum and what it means to Stockton. So, questions?
I would like to make a comment on the Noise Foundation transfer to Stockton, which is significant. And it completes what was at one time a 10-year partnership agreement that we've expedited that process. I would be remiss if I did not shout out Michelle McDonald, Lisa Haneker, Michael Cagno, and so many people who absolutely were able to demonstrate over and over again to a discerning board who had legitimate interests in the long-term vitality of that foundation to entrust that with Stockton. So kudos for an incredible job well done, and this is important, and you know, our commitment is that noise remain noise, but noise of Stockton forever.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Elmore. Next, Investment Committee report, trustee Ellis.
Thank you very much. Investment Committee met on August 10th. We heard from our two investment advisors, Ashford Consulting Group and Wells Fargo. Both reported good results, better than our benchmark of CPI plus 2.5. Ashford, for the quarter, was a touch under 2% return. For the year-to-date, it was about roughly 5.5%. You may read in the press about some endowments that are doing quite well. It's important to note, this is not an endowment fund that we manage in the Investment Committee, this is an investment fund used for the needs of the university. And so as a result, we have to, need to be much more conservative and cautious perhaps than you would in a traditional endowment fund. So again, that's why that CPI plus 2.5% measure is so important to us and what we use as our standard for performance. And that, within that regard, again, both funds or both investment advisors are exceeding that standard and we're very happy with that. And that completes my report.
Thank you. So, resolution on personnel actions. Dr. Kesselman, do you have any comments?
The folks, well, I'm sure the cabinet members will be announcing any new individuals who are here, but is there a motion to approve the personnel resolution? Yeah, is there a motion?
A second? Any discussion, comments?
Trustee Dyninger?
Yes.
Trustee Chaconi?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Dolce?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Valentine?
Yes.
Trustee Worthington?
Yes.
All right. Other business? Comments from the board of trustees? Comments from the public?
I'd like to introduce two members, two new members of our faculty and staff from the School of General Studies, Edward Horan, tutoring center specialist and coordinator for graduate and first-year support in Atlantic City Projects. Edward, are you here? Eddie, there he is. And from the School of Social Behavioral Sciences, Jennifer Dunkel, Assistant Professor of Social Work. Thank you and welcome.
Hello, everyone. I'm happy to introduce Courtney Petzel, who is in our Division of Alumni and Development, proud Stockton grad, she's an engagement coordinator.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Dyninger, President Kesselman, members of the board, members of the university community. I stand here before you in representing Dr. Tomasa Gonzalez, Vice President for Student Affairs. Unfortunately, she could not be here today. She's in Puerto Rico and it's been hit by a massive hurricane. So, at this point in time, I would like, before I get into the personnel resolutions, which are fabulous by the way, if we could take a moment to pause and reflect and say a prayer for the people in Puerto Rico and also Mexico, 7.1 on the Richter scale earthquake. Thank you. So, interesting, once again, thank you to the board and to President Kesselman for the support for our team members within Student Affairs. Today, I present to you a few new hires. Christine Easton, Complex Director for Residential Life. Laura Potter Shaw, Assistant Director for Counseling. Luke Strong, Complex Director, Residential Life. And promotions, now this is something that's really a wonderful thing, and we're very fortunate to have great people on the team in Student Affairs. And I would like to congratulate the newly minted Assistant Deans of Students, Ms. Lori Griscum. And Mr. Walter Tarver. Some other promotions for individuals that have done phenomenal work for us, Mr. Joe Lizza, Associate Director for Event Services and Campus Center Operations. And it's Dr. Joe Lizza, sorry. I caught myself after that. Additionally, new additions and promotions coming over from Academic Affairs, Nicole Mylan Tyner, Associate Director for Career Center. And someone that's no stranger to our first-year class, Ms. Jen Radwansky is our new director for new student and family programs. We also have a number of professional staff that have been promoted within the Student Affairs area. Ms. Lindsay Beddages, Assistant Director III in Event Services. Ms. Maria Gallo, Professional Service Specialist III, Facility Coordinator for Campus Center Operations. Ms. Mary Kate McKenna, Professional Service Specialist III in Campus Center and Event Services. Ms. Christine Rothermell, Professional Service Specialist III in Campus Center. And lastly, Ms. Lisa Warnock, Professional Service Specialist III in Event Services. Once again, thank you for all your support.
Good afternoon, everyone. Trish Collins, Community Engagement Liaison. Good afternoon, Chairperson Dyninger, President Kesselman, board of trustees, and Stockton community. I wanted to remind everyone to please add, if you have not done so already, the council of black faculty and staff will be celebrating our 36th Annual Scholarship Awards Dinner on Friday, November the 10th. We will be honoring some very distinguished guests. The honorees include our very own Dr. Tomasa Gonzalez as our lifetime honoree. In addition, we will honor Mel Gregory as our lifetime recipient. Our distinguished merit awardees include Ms. Renee Tolliver and our very own E. Michael Angulo, our distinguished alumni, as trustee Ray Secconi, and Ms. Dawn Watkins. Our outstanding club includes Kappa Alpha Psi undergraduate chapter. And I would also like to take the time, if you have not added this date to your calendar as well, October the 8th. Stockton Center on Successful Aging will be cosponsoring a walk-in all-timers. Our very own President Kesselman and First Lady Kesselman will be our honorary team captains. So we encourage everyone to participate. We will be having a contest for those groups who raise the most funds and also bring out the most support. So please mark your calendars for Sunday, October the 8th. We hope to see everyone in their place to represent Stockton as we typically do. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's hap, I mean, I'm so pleased and happy to announce two hires within Administration and Finance. The first one, within the Police Department, is the Emergency Operations Manager, Michael Brady's, who started in August. And he really stepped into it because the first week he was here was when we had the first weather event coming up. And then, of course, we had other deadlines to meet almost immediately. I also want to introduce Brittany Boone, who started within the Office of Budget. I don't know if she's here or not, but that's our other new addition since our last meeting.
A quick shout-out, if you want to play golf at the Foundation Golf Tournament next Tuesday, assuming that Hurricane Maria is nice to us, we'll be at Seaview, there's room for you, just see our staff. Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to welcome to the Office of General Counsel, someone who you all, I think, know pretty well. She's now sitting on the other side of the table, Ellen Bailey, who's a very welcome addition, so please welcome Ellen to the team.
Well, hello, everyone. I did not know they were making announcements about dates, but I could not sit there without announcing, thanks to our president, The Messiah on December the 10th at the Borgata at 7 o'clock. Please come out and support us. So many people in the audience will be singing, so many people will be there, and we're gonna do hallelujah, 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 our big, major music event every two years at Stockton, December the 10th. Thank you so much.
I don't think he's here, but I would like to welcome our new interim general manager of WLFR, Chad Roberts. He's been put in place and we're gonna really leverage our media properties into an empire now. Additionally, I want you to be aware that there is now an exhibit in the art gallery of handmade Japanese paper by a world-renowned artist, Kyoko Ibe. This is gonna be the basis for a play that then is going to wind through the art gallery, both floors, on the history of papermaking. It's gonna have myths, it's gonna have a lot of Japanese cultural practices, and a lot of sort of superstars in their relative areas in Japan, no drumming, shirbushi dance, biwa chant. It's going to be an unusual and a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, so please get your tickets. It's in the art gallery on November 17th and 18th, but the show will be there in two then. Also, just to follow up on Beverly, portions of your ticket purchased for The Messiah will go toward Stockton Student Scholarships.
Are you jumping up? Go ahead, Brian.
One more announcement, I forgot to introduce the most important member of the Office of General Counsel who recently joined us, and Sharon Stubbs, who keeps us all in line. So she's also a new member of our team additionally.
Mike, can I say something before? One thing, we, you know, we talked, we shout out a lot of people, but I would be remiss if I did not mention the work of Steve Radwansky and the Housing and Residential Life staff who had to absorb this, do everything on the run. Steve, stand up and be recognized for making everything happen. For those who don't know, he's a former student trustee here, by the way. Two other things, there are three individuals, I don't know, I don't know whether they're here, and they're listed as retirements, and I'm really hoping they'll be here at the December meeting. Mel Gregory, who as you all know has done a phenomenal job in the Office of Admissions and then Enrollment Management. Nick Manzer, who was a budget and accounting person for the Provost Office, and of course, my longest-term colleague and dear friend, Joe Marquetti, who I don't know where he is, but he's always in my heart, so, but they'll be retiring as stated here. And one other thing before, I know, I'm not doing this, but if you stay around, I encourage everyone to check out Michael Angulo's socks. They are something here today. Okay, I just wanted to know. Now, Michael, go ahead.
Thank you, the board and public. I saw a lot of very good news, including the increase in the number of students and all the building that's going on. It's all, I think, very, very good things for our future. However, I have to say that I was a little surprised that the all, the, the majority of all the faculty hires, there was only one of, it seems like 21, who were tenure-track positions, the others being 13Ds and part-timers. So, I am a little concerned, I'm here on, our president of the union, Roger, was not able to make it today. But I am a little bit concerned about that, given the 5% growth in students and the fact that those students really, one of the major reasons they're coming here is their majors. And I'm just wondering if you folks have discussed this and if there may be plans for increasing those, what are 13Ds, which are one-year appointments, as you know, to tenure-track positions, or what the, just in general, maybe the plans for increasing the number of full-time tenure-track faculty would be?
Are you asking us?
Yes, I'm asking if there are any such plans that could be talked about here.
I thought this might have been just some discussion that we're gonna have today.
Yes, I've been working closely with the deans, let's talk about our staffing as we grow. In three retreats we had over the summer, the biggest concern that came up was that as we grow, we will not lose our identity or the quality that we have. So we were working together to create hiring plans. One reason we have a lot of 13Ds this year is because we overshot the enrollment goals, and so we had to do some hiring quickly, and that'll allow us some time then to do searches for tenure-track people. We also did analysis to show that before this year even, we were growing in faculty at a higher at a higher rate than growing in students, which is a good thing, and we plan to keep that up.
There isn't, thank you, Lori, and I want to thank the deans and assistant deans because one of the things I was concerned about, and so, one of the things we're going to do is deal with facts. So, one of the things that I was concerned about when we brought in that many students was there, would there be a loss in FTE? In other words, would students be able to get their courses? I can say with absolute certainty they did because I think it's 94.3%. Think of that statistic, of those 8,005 or 600 undergraduate students are enrolled full-time. Okay? That is astounding. So, that percentage is high, or if it's not the highest ever, it's right there. So, I think you need to know that. The classes were there. We've taken a look at every single freshman seminar, every single first course. So, we are following, one of the things I will, I will say with absolute certainty, and I think most of you who know me know this to be true, we are doing a lot of data analysis, far more than we've ever done in the past, to make decisions, at least based on numbers. Now, there are qualitative factors that you have in, but we're going to deal with both the quantitative issues as well as the qualitative issues, and we maintain that commitment to the 70/30. And you know, Michael, as well as I know, there is no other institution in this state that can say that. And we say it, and we say it with pride, because we do believe, just like you do, that we want full-time faculties who not only are involved in teaching, research, and service, but serve as preceptors and are part of the institution's retention efforts.
One thing I would add to that is just that students did get classes in the fall, but it was a crunch at the end. And so, we do know that many students who would, we would prefer that they get their first courses in their first semester, have been deferred to the spring. So, we know that. They're still able to get the courses, but we plan to correct that as the enrollments stabilize.
Thank you. Any other comments? I have two quick things to mention. I neglected to mention that there's a new community garden near the freshman dorm, and I have not seen it yet myself, but it sounds really wonderful. And one of the most intriguing things about it is that the fall season harvest will all be donated to the Community Engagement Kitchen. So, I want to learn more about that, and I'm going to look on the new website and probably read more about it. I looked at the new website, and it's lovely, and it's really interesting to hear about all the programs that are happening, but now I want to find out about the community garden. And the second thing is to invite you all to a little meet and greet reception that we're going to have with the Board of Trustees after this meeting, right behind you. So, a very short commute. I think...
Which motion to adjourn?
Oh, yes, there. Dean Stroh.
Sorry, I just wanted to, Dean Stroh, I wanted to address Michael's question. Mike, you mentioned that there was only one tenure-track hire among that list. That's because we didn't really include the last year's or this year's new class in that group, and I think that was a little bit of an oversight.
They were in July?
Yeah, they were done earlier. So, just not to get the impression that we only hired one tenure-track person, because we have five tenure-track people that are in NAMSS, and then probably about the same across the university, as we had a rather large group this year. So, your point is well-taken, Mike, but I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Yep, thanks for that. All right. Gavel in hand.
Wow. You're not even asked for an adjournment.
Oh, should I have asked all that? Okay. We moved. We did. It's over.[1790.41][1790.41](laughter)[1791.41][1791.41](music)